For citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning, everyone. Full audience today. Want to welcome you all to our Board of County Commission meeting. It is Wednesday, June 6th. We're going to start with Pledge of Allegiance and the prayer from our Chaplain, Commissioner Stacy White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and our stakeholders as we make decisions this morning that are important for Hillsborough County. I pray for our national and state leaders, that you will guide them as they make decisions that are important for this nation and for this state. Lord, I thank you for the stakeholders here that are here to be recognized this morning for various things, particularly these young people that I see in the audience. We're so thankful for the great things that they do out in our community. Lord, I pray for our first responders and members of our armed forces. I pray that you will guide them and deliver them home safely each and every day and offer them comfort. And I ask for all of these things in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White, for that wonderful prayer. And we're going to start. We have several presentations today, and our first presentation will be Commissioner Hagan recognizing the West Chase Colts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is indeed a very special day, and I'm privileged to have the honor of recognizing a special team here in our community, the West Chase Colts. The West Chase Colts have been in existence since 2001, having played in the TBYFL before joining Pop Warner in 2017. They won the national championship in only their second season in Pop Warner. And what I think is also extremely special is that these boys are winners both on and off the field. Despite the hardships of travel and play, which including traveling to Orlando, Merritt Island, and Cape Coral, these student athletes maintained at least a 3.0 GPA. In fact, eight players are All-American Scholars, a scholastic designation that requires a minimum of 96 percent GPA just to apply. So this is a very, very talented and special team. And at this point, I'd like to invite up Coach Curtis Wilder, Athletic Director Chuck McLeod, Football Commissioner Dennis Lopez, President Dwayne Renniger, Team Captains Xavier Townsend, Jesse Von Dross, and Bryson Martin. If you guys could please come forward. The commendation states, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize the West Chase Colts for being the first team from Hillsborough County to win a national championship in Pop Warner football, the oldest national youth football and cheerleading organization in the world. Competing in Pop Warner for the first time in 2017, the Colts dominated the Division II Junior Varsity Division for players 10 to 13 years old, finishing the regular season without giving up a single point. After winning its four games in the Southeast Regional Playoffs, including the finale 32 to zero, West Chase advanced to the Pop Warner Super Bowl at the ESPN Wildwater Sports Complex in Orlando on December 8th. With superior skills on both sides of the ball, the Colts crushed the Seahawks of West Haven, Connecticut, 28 to nothing, to win the championship and finish the season undefeated." This resounding victory not only achieved a proud first for Hillsborough County, it cast a well-deserved spotlight on the West Chase community and established a brotherhood among the players that they will enjoy the rest of their lives. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend the West Chase Colts for being the best in its division in the nation and wishes the players and coaches continued success in the future, awarded the sixth day of June 2018." And before I present this commendation, I've always said that some of life's greatest lessons are learned on the ball field. So I'd like to thank all the coaches for teaching these young men both on and off the field. And I'd also like to give a special thank you to all the parents for everything you've done and all the sacrifices you've made so these boys can play ball. And a special thank you to Team Mom Pamela Townsend. I've got written down here, she was who kept the boys in line. And Kevin Doan, who was the kid's chaperone for the week in Disney. And it says, "A tall feet surely." So special thank you to you guys, and my pleasure to present this commendation to you. And then we're going to take a photo here, and then we have a very special ring ceremony where we're going to recognize each player that's going to come up. You guys want to say anything, everybody? Want to say anything? Oh, no, not really. Well, congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Take a picture back there. A.J. R.J.
Now, at this point, I'd like to invite up the players, coaches, and parents. We'll take one more group shot.
This side of the circle, turn to the side facing this way and squeeze.
Let me assure everyone that we'll have not only pictures, but a DVD for each player that we'll provide to the parents. So you'll get copies of all that. And thanks again, each and every one of you, for getting all the sacrifices that you've made so these young men can play ball. And thanks again to the coaches for teaching them some of life's greatest lessons. We're extremely proud of this team, and thank you again for allowing us to recognize your team.
Good job, Commissioner Hagan. Thanks for bringing them forward. West Chase is a fabulous community filled with lots of young families and really great schools and good sports programs. So congratulations, everyone. Our next proclamation, well, next two, Commissioner Miller will do a proclamation and then a
It is my honor and a pleasure to present this next proclamation to some gentlemen I know very, very, very well. One of the grandest fraternities in the world. I've been privileged to be a member of for 43 years. And the work that we do, not only in Hillsborough County, but throughout the state of Florida, this country, and throughout the world, to make it a better place for everyone to live, work, and play. So I'm going to ask my brothers of the Tampa Alumni Chapter, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated, and our Pole Mark, Brother Robert Irvin, to please come forward. All of you. How you doing? Just step around, step around. All right, Brother Lee? I'm all right. I'm good, man. Good to see you, too. All right. How you doing? Getting around? Everybody getting around? How you doing? Somebody come over here. I think you've heard me state before that there are a group called the Divine Nine, and those are the nine predominantly African-American fraternities and fraternities in the world. And leading the charge as a fraternity that I'm proud to be a member of, is Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity. Tampa Alumni Chapter is probably the oldest alumni chapter of any of the Divine Nine in Hillsborough County. This June, we will be 90 years old, and we continue to work in this community to make it the best it possibly can be. And these gentlemen standing behind me are the part of that group that works to make this county and this state of Florida the best it possibly can be. So it's my honor to present this proclamation on behalf of Hillsborough County Government to the Brothers of Tampa Alumni Chapter, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity. The proclamation reads, "Whereas during the 1900s, African-American students were actively dissuaded from tending college, and office schools were designed to prevent those who enrolled from assimilating into co-curricular campus life. Whereas on June 5th, 1911, to combat the obstacles against African-Americans in Indiana University, ten courageous students found Kappa Alpha Psi, whose constitution is predicated upon and dedicated to the principles of achievement through an inclusive democratic fraternity. And whereas fraternity membership spans numerous diverse professions, including doctors, lawyers, councilmen, educators, members of the armed forces, and business leaders. And whereas the Tampa Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi spearheads many community-based programs, such as mentorship, volunteerism, and local ministries and nonprofit service organizations, and guidance for undergraduate members at St. Leo University and the University of South Florida. And whereas notable alumni of Kappa Alpha Psi Tampa Chapter includes E.L. Bing, the first African-American commissioner of this commission, who served on the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners, Dr. Reshe R. Williams, M.D., charter founder of Tampa Alumni Chapter, James Hammond, the Reverend A. Brown, A.J. Farrell, John Lockhart, and Samuel Brown, who are all educators. And whereas the Tampa Alumni Chapter will celebrate its 90th anniversary on June 15, 2018, by hosting and lunching and promoting infant safe sleep, its latest project for which the fraternity would donate 90 pack and plays to help Tampa Bay communities reduce infant sleep-related deaths. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County does hereby declare June 6, 2018, as Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Day in Hillsborough County and encourages all residents and visitors to support the fraternity in its groundbreaking efforts to eliminate all boundaries of discrimination and to serve the community through humanitarian efforts executed this 9th day of June, 2018, as signed by the seven members of the Board of County Commissioners. Brother Pole Mark is President. Congratulations.
Thank you, Brother Miller.
You're welcome. I'll say up your words.
On behalf of this illustrious chapter, I would like to thank the Board of County Commissioners and the Hillsborough County Government for this proclamation. And on behalf of the brothers who've come before us in the 90 years that we've been an impactful part of this community, we say thank you for this honor and recognition.
Holt to come forward, please.
I'm sorry. That was all on my list. I only had those two names on my list, but that's okay. Safe and Sound has done some remarkable work in this community to curtail violence in Hillsborough County, every part of Hillsborough County that we possibly can go with the dollars they have, and hopefully they'll continue to spread throughout this community to teach our young people that violence will do nothing but get you in trouble, first and foremost, and teach them and teach our community that it's cheaper to put the money at the front end than at the back end. When I talk about that, the back end is prison, the front end is prevention program. So Safe and Sound is doing that. So it's my honor to present this commendation of Safe and Sound of Hillsborough County. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Safe and Sound Hillsborough for its leadership in raising awareness about violence prevention. Also known as Hillsborough County Community Violence Program Collaborative, Safe and Sound was founded to help policymakers address violence in the community. Created in 2013, the initiative focuses on public health model, bringing together community and professional sponsors to foster a comprehensive prevention and intervention approach to violence. For the past five years, Safe and Sound has worked tirelessly to ensure all children, teenagers, and families have support in addition to nurturing relationships throughout their communities. The initiative's numerous successful efforts and events include the Violence Prevention Conference, also known as SAFE Summit 18, which focuses on developing strategies and solutions to stop violence before it begins. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Safe and Sound for its efforts to increase violence awareness and prevention and support its mission to address the causes of violence before it occurs, awarded the sixth day of June 2018, signed by the seven members of the Board of County Commissioners. And am I giving this to you? Am I giving it to the chair?
First, we'd like to thank the Board of County Commissioners in Hillsborough County for their partnership and their support through both Parks and Rec, through this commission, and through all the partners. What you see behind me is just a fraction of the agencies that are supporting us in our efforts, from the State Attorney's Office to the Public Defender's Office, our law enforcement partners at Tampa, Temple Terrace Plant City. We see community partners such as USF. We have the school district representative, the sheriff's office, and then most importantly, the community and other agencies, especially including the Children's Board. When we look at how we can prevent violence, the solutions don't start in Washington, D.C. They don't get done and get started in Tallahassee. They start right here in our community. And through the efforts of all of the partner agencies, through the efforts of our community agencies and quarterbacks, all throughout Hillsborough County, but specifically in our target areas, we have been able to see the needle move. We have been able to see hope be reinstilled in the lives of our youth, and we will continue to do this work. It is hard. It is hard work. It is not something that's for the faint of heart, but we know that together, we can and will continue to make a difference. So Commissioner Miller, thank you for your leadership and your guidance as we move forward. I now like to turn it over to our Chair and our Public Defender, Mrs. Julianne Holt.
Well, good morning, everyone. And all I wanted to do was really today, thank Commissioner Miller, as well as all the other members of the Board of County Commission, because it was from this particular area, right here where we stand today, that we actually kicked off five years ago. And because of the support of the Board of County Commissioners five years ago, today we actually are making a difference in the lives of many of our youth. Could not come at a better time, as you all know, because public safety and our children are critically important to all of us. And with everything that has been occurring across the country, as well as in this state, I'm proud to know that every one of the individuals standing behind me today, as well as those that weren't able to be here, have really taken a vested interest in ensuring that we spend the rest of our life fighting hard for our children, fighting hard for safety, fighting hard to prevent violence, and most importantly, to try and put Mr. Warren and myself out of business. Right, Mr. Warren? We want to reduce crime. We want to prevent violence. We want to make our job something that people don't think about every single day. We love what we do, don't get me wrong, but a better community and no violence and no criminal justice system for us would be a perfect world. So thank you all very much.
Before we take our seats, I just wanted to introduce to some that do not know and, you know, present to others, the members of our Leadership Council that are represented here. We have Mrs. Marie Moreno from the Public Defender's Office, Captain Johnson, one of our newest members, but one who's jumped right in from the city of Tampa and Tampa Police Department, our very own State Attorney, Mr. Andrew Warren. We have Lieutenant Greco from Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, our Vice Chair and Chief of Police for Temple Terrace, Kenneth Albano. We have Dr. Kathleen Heidi from the University of South Florida. And again, our own Public Defender and our Chair of our Leadership Council, Julianne Holt. And immediately following her is our Commissioner, Commissioner Miller, who has done a fabulous job at supporting us and basically telling me what to do to get things done, and they keep me in line. And I appreciate his leadership and his friendship along the way. Thank you so much.
And thank you to the team, to the board, and Julianne, Andrew, all of you, Law Enforcement, and Freddie, thanks for the good job that you're doing with Safe and Sound. Okay, Mr. Merrill, we can now move to the changes, to review the changes to the agenda.
Yes, Commissioners, we have a couple of changes. We have one off the agenda, Item B-18, which is a contract to ProTavidi, Inc., in the amount of $256,920 for professional services to assist the county internal auditor in evaluating the efficiency and effectiveness of the Oracle Enterprise Resource Planning System. We have one deletion, which is A-28, which was a resolution declaring a county-owned property surplus. This was the property at 5209 Ehrlich Road. That item is being deleted. And Item G-1 is being deferred to June 20th. That was the Head Start Self-Assessment Program Outcome Analysis and Improvement Plan. We have one item that was pulled from consent for discussion by Commissioner Chris. That's A-8. That was scheduling a public hearing for June 20th to consider the adoption ordinance requiring a financial impact statement for charter amendments. We have two time certans beginning at 10:00 a.m., F-2, which is Commissioner Hagan's item, asking for an update regarding ongoing work to connect the Calum Harbor Community and Lutes to water, to county water. And a 10:15, B-9, which is a resolution authorizing the issuance of the county's community investment tax refunding revenue bonds, Series 2018, in the principal amount not to exceed $70 million. Those are the changes.
Okay. And motion by Commissioner White, second, excuse me, by Commissioner Chris, to approve the changes to the agenda. Seeing no further discussion, please accord your vote.
There it goes. Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. We're now ready to move into the public comment portion of the meeting. The board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the board that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or a staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the board members and the public. The board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes The Board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. People wishing to speak before the Board during the public comment portion of the meeting should complete the electronic request for public comment form located in the lobby just outside the Boardroom. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. And when addressing the Board, please speak clearly into the microphone, state your name. Three minutes will be allowed for each speaker. And the first speaker for on the agenda is Tom Adherhold. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, everyone. Mr. Merrill, County Commissioners, and Ms. Beck, I bring you good tidings from the Veterans Memorial Park and Museum Committee. I'm Tom Adherhold, current Chair of the nonprofit that worked alongside the creative group of county staff, design firm, administration, and the Board of County Commissioners to bring our campus to its current position as a world-class destination. You have each walked the campus and shared moving moments during events. The most recent was Memorial Day, that was hosted in the latest addition to our campus, the Veteran Resource Center. Your attendance and support are greatly appreciated. The campus is currently home to world-class memorials that honor our hometown heroes who fell in each of our nation's wars. It also has a museum for our veterans' memorabilia and equipment, and the recently completed Resource Center to assist veterans. The campus combines features that are absent from other similar military and veteran projects. Its uniqueness is impactful, but as our field teams have discovered, many chapters of the military and veteran story are yet to be told. The rest of the story will be told within the future Military Learning Center of Tampa Bay Phase. The center will present the contributions of science, innovation, character, discipline, focus, and teamwork to our nation's economy and society. The building blocks for the next phase of the story are taking shape, and item A-26 makes that happen. The committee will manage events on nights and weekends. This will expand public access without resulting in added cost to the county. It will also allow the committee to generate funds to cover the administrative and promotional costs of a capital campaign to facilitate the additional build-out of the park. Our future is unfolding, and it looks very bright. The campus is attracting many inquiries and offers of support, all of which is a direct result of many years of diligent effort by many veterans and veteran service organizations, and unwavering support from Hillsborough County, this Board of County Commissioners, administration, and staff. Our community has a true jewel of which we are all beneficiaries. And may God continue to bless our community, our citizens, this great county, and the United States of America. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for that update. And for off-the-agenda items, our first speaker is David McAllister, followed by Jim Davison. Morning, David.
Good morning, Commissioners. David McAllister. And as you know, I come here to advocate for appreciation, for recognition of local veterans and history, especially that of the period of the war between the states. Today, I'd like to welcome the Alpha Phi Phi size, as I also did the Delta Sigma Theta's recently, and would note that all Greeks, all fraternities, all sororities are right now under attack. We understand that fraternalism is important with our young people, especially collegians, and has great contributions to make. I happen to be in Alpha Tau Omega. But we all need to support fraternalism in college. At FSU and at other colleges, fraternalism is under attack. Just recently, the Augusta Jane Evans Wilson chapter of the United Daughters of the Confederacy and the Benjamin Camp of the SCV dedicated a plaque to fraternalism in the war between the states. There's a few fraternity brothers, a few Freemasons and whatnot there, but it also is dedicated to four fraternities that were founded by war between the states veterans, Alpha Tau Omega, Kappa Alpha, Sigma Nu, and Pi Kappa Alpha as well. I have to note that. We just tried to have on the agenda Veterans Park here, and I participate in Veterans Park. I just want the Board to understand that we have to be careful. There's been a longstanding issue with the recognition of the local men that fought in the war between the states here. And I have to say that it's an embarrassment to the county. If you notice the title here on the plaque that is dedicated to the Calvary, it actually says on the plaque, Calvary. Calvary was the mountain, the hill upon which Jesus Christ was crucified. Cavalry means soldiers that are on horseback. If the Veterans Park can't understand the difference, you know, they should not be in the monument business, I tell you. But I think they can correct that in due time. I also wanted to speak to you, saying that the Diversity Advisory Council is meeting tonight. Now that one Hillsborough festival is over, you need to give them something to do. They were bypassed on the Race Relations Symposium. They were bypassed on the Black History Museum. They were bypassed on the Cultural Arts Council. You need to bring them in on the team or disband them. And I'll talk to you again next month, or later this month. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chris has a question. You're recognized.
I see Mr. Merrill isn't present. Greg, can you come up? It looks to me like we have a typo here. It's an easy fix. It's a bronze plaque. Grind down the two words and screw in place a small cover plaque on top of that with the correct spelling.
It's actually in two different places.
Well, it can be corrected.
Just have staff go out there and look at it.
The last time Mr. McAllister brought this issue up, we did contact the folks who cast the plate, so a new one is on the way. I don't have an ETA for that, but I will make sure that everybody gets that.
It'd be less expensive just to do an overlay, but...
We've already ordered the new plaque. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Next speaker, Jim Davison, followed by Taylor Ralph. I'll give it to the clerk, and they'll... Is that something for everybody? Okay. They'll pass it out.
Jim Davison.
Morning.
I was here, the last time I was here, I presented a transportation tax revenue plan. Commissioner White requested that it be forwarded to the Citizens Advisory Committee, and Mr. Merrill said that it would be better to vet those numbers before it was sent over to the Citizens Advisory Committee. I met with Mr. Fessler, Ms. Weiss, and Mr. Brickley, and we had a pleasant meeting, and they confirmed that those numbers are indeed correct. Actually, they were a bit conservative. And so, a few things. The reorganization of the present transportation policy, which is $600 million, under this plan, it would free up about $273 million between 2020 and 2026, money that, according to your April 19 workshop on the budget, is going to be drastically needed for your master plans and balancing the unincorporated county fund. Those concerned with transportation are balking at the $273 million. Implementing the quarter cent sales tax revenue will replace $223 million conservatively over that same period of time, so you'd have a net loss of about $50 million, which could be replaced or not with one-time revenues over those six to seven years. So I would request that the Board, knowing that this extends the transportation policy from 10 years to 25 years, and increases the revenues from $600 million to over $2.5 billion, that it would just be in the best interest of the county to forward this on to the Citizens Advisory Committee for their consideration. And then there was one other subject that I became aware of, that there's another player in town as far as sales tax revenues. The master plan for the school board is about $3 billion over the next 20 years, and they're contemplating a sales tax revenue under the school outlay capital surtax that is available to them. They don't need your permission to do it. They can put it on whenever they like, and it can go up to half a cent, anywhere from zero to half a cent. That would put us in a predicament, because it would possibly mean that the voters would be voting on three sales tax revenues over the next six to seven years, something that I don't think anybody wants to happen. And there's ways to mitigate that. You could make the, instead of re-upping the CIT tax at a half cent, you could do it at a quarter cent, you could do it at a half cent over 20 years. That would give the school board their $2.7 billion, would also make available another $900 million for the county and municipalities.
Thank you, Jim. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have been briefed by Ms. Weiss and Mr. Fessler. They do agree that the numbers in the worksheet are accurate. I want to stress that they did not render any opinions with respect to the policy decisions included within the worksheet. However, with that being said, you know, given that the numbers, you know, are accurate as a starting point, I think this is a project that's worthy of us passing along to the Citizens Advisory Committee to work on and take a look at. So I'd like to make a motion that we send this worksheet and these financial numbers along to the Citizens Advisory Committee to take a look at and work on with staff.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner White to send the transportation proposal from Jim Davison to the Citizens Advisory Committee. And we have a second by Commissioner Chris. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Okay. Thank you very much. Taylor Ralph, and then Beth Veeneman. Morning, Taylor.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. I'm here to speak with you about a project that the county is getting ready to take over. It's a county road within the city of Tampa. It's Bay to Bay Boulevard. I'm speaking not just about this particular project, but about other county-city partnership roads and safer streets in general, but I'm going to use this as an example. The county is preparing to take over Bay to Bay Boulevard. It's a repaving project, and I kind of wanted to update you all on the history of the project. The city conducted a significant amount of studies to look at the project prior to repaving, to understand how it's being used, and what they can do to make the road safer following complete streets and Vision Zero policies. They looked at the traffic counts, they looked at how the road was being used, the turnings, et cetera. Three engineers from the city recommended unequivocally to the public, and as a formal recommendation, that the design would be updated from its current undivided four-lane section to a three-lane section, providing a critical left-hand turn lane on a neighborhood retail corridor that sees a lot of left turns. These businesses have really been struggling, because cars are speeding well above the 35 mile an hour posted speed limit, because we have wide lanes, and we have, not just wide lanes, but we also have left turns that are happening in the drive lanes, and so a lot of cars are darting in and around these left turns. According to the city's fact sheet, this change that the engineers recommended and designed, by the way, would make the road 20% to 47% safer for all road users, cars and people, without impacting the drive times or the level of service, and actually improving the level of service, and also would not change, it would actually improve the road's capacity, because the capacity of this road is actually controlled by the stoplights, not by the speed of travel. You see, the other issue that we have in this neighborhood is that Bay to Bay has three schools along it. It also has two to three other day schools, and children are crossing this road every day to get to school, not to mention that with the school time changes, they will be crossing this street in the dark in this fall. We have a lot of other issues, but in short, this repaving opportunity presents a very low-cost, easy fix to this road to comply with the county's Vision Zero and Complete Streets policies. And we are interested, as a neighborhood association, in working with the city, with the county, with CSX, and with TECO, to make this an example for how we can make our streets safer without impacting drive times and without impacting the road's capacity. Can I have more time? Can someone else yield time to me?
If someone's willing to give up their time, are you, Shaun? Okay. You're willing to give up your whole three minutes? Okay, great. Thank you.
So as you'll see here, this is the summary of the city's recommendations. The current four-lane section is inefficient. The major signalized intersections control the capacity, as I mentioned. The additional center-left turn lane would improve the operational and safety benefits, again, 20% to 47% improvement for safety for cars and for people. The proposed changes do not diminish vehicular operations, but significantly improve safety and efficiency for pedestrians and cyclists. Proposed changes east of Esperanza will improve the operations of those intersections by a full level of service. So major, major improvements, and we're only talking about a repaving project that's already budgeted for, that's already in the plan, and it's literally just paint on a road that we're talking about at this time. We'll take sidewalk improvements if the county would like to help us there. We have a lot of retailers along this corridor that have four-foot to five-foot sidewalks with inches between them and 45 mile an hour cars, if not higher speeds. There are pizza shops, there are ice cream parlors, there are popcorn shops, breakfast spots, local retailers all along this corridor, and they're all struggling, because cars are driving very fast. Pedestrians do not feel safe on the corridor, and so the neighborhood has really been trying to make this a better situation by working with TECO to try and remove the poles from the middle of the sidewalks that we do have, and encouraging safer driving and safer walking opportunities for our neighborhood and for our schoolchildren. So, as you all probably know, the city's recommendation for the three-lane section after public comment and after further review, the mayor actually rejected this plan. And now, what we're being told is that this plan has been changed to leave the four-lane undivided section, which would get rid of that 20% to 47% safety improvement on the road, and really is not going to change the behavior of the drivers to make anything safer for any of the kids that are crossing to go to school. In fact, the road now has a lot of potholes, and it is very difficult to get through. That does slow down traffic, actually. So when they have brand-new asphalt, these cars are going to speed even faster than they are now. And we're very concerned, as obviously Bay to Bay feeds right into Bay Shore, and people are trying to get to Bay Shore to walk and bike, and they do that along Bay to Bay, and they stop at local shops. The economic development potential of breathing new life into this corridor by making the road calmer and making it safer for pedestrians is huge, and the property values will increase, economic activity will increase. This is a real win-win-win for the county, and for the city, and for all the other stakeholders that the Neighborhood Association is working for. So what we're asking for is that the county look at this project with a fresh set of eyes now that it's in your court, and work with us to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Ralph? Mr. Ralph?
Yes.
I just like to... You put up some figures there.
Yes.
Can we see where the columns are with the numbers? So these are the delays. No, no, no. The other one. Right? These are the average delay per vehicle in seconds. So we're just... What you're talking about, the kind of complete streets and remake, the delays are, we have them listed here. I just think that could be kind of confusing. People wouldn't actually know that that is just seconds, not even...
The green is actually showing any changes to the level of service. What you see on Bay to Bay at MacDill and Bay to Bay at Bay Shore, the level of service is improving and moderately changing, as well as on the other sheet, the drive times. This is how long it takes you to get through the Dale Mabry to Bay Shore section. That actually... That actually shows you here that there is literally no change in the amount of time it would take you to get through the Bay to Bay, or sorry, the Dale Mayberry to Bay Shore section on Bay to Bay, again, because the stoplights, there are three to four stoplights along that section, and that is what's controlling capacity. And the capacity is actually improving at all of those sections from the city's original design.
So I want to thank you for bringing down this information this morning. I know all of us were, everyone in the community has been on kind of high alert after the death of Jessica Renaud and her daughter, Lilia, at Bay Shore, but also on 40th Street.
Yep.
The, I think her name was Leila, who was killed on 40th Street. We know, crossing the street the same day. We know that our community throughout Hillsborough County, year after year after year, it's been a terribly dangerous place for anyone to walk or ride a bicycle, second in the nation, second in the nation, time and time and time and time again. And we've done little to move the agenda. We've talked about it, moving the agenda on complete streets and making our streets safer. It's an opportunity that only comes every few decades when repaving is done and the street is reconsidered. I appreciate you coming down. I know this has been very controversial and involves both the city and the county. It's a county road, but the county typically defers to the city, as I think is appropriate, actually, in terms of how to work with the road. But I'd like to make a motion to just ask that we approach the city again, kind of as you say, just to review the project with a fresh set of eyes, not with any explicit charge about it, but just to, at least in light of what's happened, to reconsider this project moving forward because it's important, it'll set the tone of that area for decades to come. And so I'd like to make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Kemp. And seconded by Commissioner Chris, Mr. Merrill.
Yes, Commissioners, I just need to clarify for the record. So the county is not, this project is not in the county's court, and I think you're alluding to that. We have a repaving project in our CIP. That's the extent of what we're doing. And Christine can speak to the legalities of it, but from an operational point of view, and I think this is what you're referring to, it is a county road, but we don't mandate and control how roads in the city are managed because a county road connects to a larger city grid. We can't step in and say you should treat this road differently because it might not be consistent with how the city is operating. So we have, my staff has spent quite a bit of time talking with the city. We will approach them again, but it's really the city's decision, and we don't have funding to do the roads on our own on a corporate area, much less take on a major project in the city. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
And I appreciate, thank you.
You're not in the queue.
I appreciate the clarification, and this isn't any kind of mandate or anything like that.
Well, I mean, I have to interrupt because I have been working on this exact item, meeting with residents. I have met with Taylor and his community. I have referred this to staff. Lucia Garses will tell you how many times to relook and look at. I understand the importance of this, and Mr. Merrill, I didn't want to cut you off either, but this is, we've now even gotten to the point where we've gotten the county attorney involved to interpret the agreement so that it's clear to us. We have always deferred to the city, and they have the authority. The mayor has put his stake in the ground on this project. Unfortunately, that is the latest opinion I've gotten even since you and I have talked when I asked him to relook at it again. And at this point, you know, our hands are tied. I personally would like to pass the gavel and make a substitute motion to have the staff investigate how we can turn these county roads over to the city.
Do it.
And that is really the motion that needs to be made here because I just, no one wants our streets to be safer than I do. I drive down them every day. But unfortunately, our hands are so tied on this and legally tied on what we can do. I want to help. I want you to have the safest streets with crosswalks and intersections that we can possibly have. But I think that the bigger problem is, is that we're going to get caught in the middle on every single county road project in the city from here on out that needs major changes to it, like, you know, pedestrian crosswalks and safe streets. And like Mr. Merrill said, we barely have enough funding to cover our needs in the county. So I'm going to pass the gavel. I'm going to make a substitute motion to, and I'm not against having staff relook at it, and I can say, "Staff, go ask them again," but I would like to see how we can get these county roads turned back over to the city. And that's my motion.
Okay. We have a motion. It has been seconded. We have the substitute motion. Is there a second?
No, there is a second. Commissioner White.
Commissioner White has a second. I need to speak towards the first motion first, since I seconded it. I seconded it because I felt that you were trying to encourage improvement because you sympathize with the needs of the community. I, too, sympathize with those needs of the community. I drive that road five days a week, taking my daughter to the Academy of Holy Names and having to come here afterwards. I see the speeders, I see the pedestrians, I see the problems because the road is not a straightaway. You have a lot of bends and angles in it where you have blind spots, and I, too, want to see improvements made there. But listening to this discussion with Mike Merrill and Madam Chair, and you drive that road every day of the week because you live there, I'm going to have to withdraw my second because I think that there is a protocol here that needs to be followed now, and I'm beginning to understand that. So my withdrawal of my second is not a withdrawal of support. It's a withdrawal to allow the proper procedural movement forward with doing this. So with withdrawing my second, it changes the dynamics here. We now have no first proposal. You'll have to change yours to a motion.
We're just, I did a substitute motion, so regardless, if my motion passes, that motion dies anyway.
It doesn't make a difference.
It doesn't make a difference. So just call for a vote on the substitute, and call on Commissioner Miller, actually is in the queue to speak also.
If there is no initial motion, then there cannot be a substitute motion, and since I withdrew my second to the first motion, there is now no motion. So you'll have to reword your motion as a motion rather than substitute.
Okay.
Can I, can I clarify?
Yes.
When you made, when the motion was made by Commissioner Kemp and he seconded it, and then you made a substitute motion, Commissioner Kemp's motion still belongs to the body.
Right.
So you cannot withdraw your second.
Well, I'll have to turn to the apolitaring because I respectfully disagree.
My understanding is that when there's a substitute motion, you just go ahead and vote on that. I think it would get to the same place either way because Commissioner Merman could simply restate her motion, and presumably there would be a same second, and you'll get to the same place, I think.
Okay. Restate your motion.
The substitute?
Doesn't matter. The attorney says either way.
Okay. I would like to ask county staff to look at the county roads and discuss with the city how we can start to turn those county roads back over to the city. And I'll also add to have Ms. Garses talk to Jean Duncan one more time about Bay to Bay to see if there's anything that we can do. But I just got the final update yesterday, and the mayor has made his decision, is what it said. So I think it doesn't hurt to ask, but that's my motion.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none?
I'm in the queue.
Oh, yes. Commissioner Miller's in the queue.
Okay, that's not up on my board.
Sorry.
Commissioner Miller?
I believe Commissioner Merman answered my question. You said in your motion, you talked about all county rules within the city, you just didn't specifically one. That's answered my question. Okay, very good.
Are you, you're okay with that?
Okay. Anybody else in your queue? Nobody else in my queue. Clerk will open the board, and we'll go for a vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Next speaker, Beth Veeneman, then Char Lurch.
Good morning. My name is Beth Veeneman, and I am a member of St. Mark's Episcopal Church, and it's a member congregation in HOPE, which is the Hillsborough Organization for Progress and Equality. Every family deserves a safe and affordable place to call home. This belief and the stories of families suffering from the lack of affordable housing push us to continue to come here to ask you to take concrete steps to resolve our county's increasing affordable housing crisis. As the Board of County Commissioners, you have the power to implement a solution. You can decide to dedicate ongoing local public revenue of $10 million annually for affordable housing to meet the needs of vulnerable families among us, working families and seniors with low incomes. Dedicated means that you see the seriousness of the problem, establishing a way for builders to plan for the creation of more affordable housing. And you can decide to pass an ordinance to establish a Hillsborough Affordable Housing Fund that commits the revenue to specifically defined local housing goals with local control and accountability. A local ordinance with establishing such a fund can build in flexibility to meet changing local needs. It can ensure working families and seniors with lower incomes will benefit from this housing, and it can define how the funds will be redistributed to developers. Such a fund with sustaining local revenue can tackle the current crisis and avoid future ones, and viable local funding revenue sources do exist. This public funding will then leverage additional private and public funds to fuel needed development of decent, affordable housing in our county. You, as commissioners, can establish a fund dedicating local public revenue sources of $10 million. It needs to be enough to make a difference in addressing our growing crisis. And through an ordinance, you can define how the money is used and to meet the critical housing needs of low-wage working families who contribute to the economic vitality of this county, we ask you again for your leadership to establish such a fund with significant local dedicated ongoing funding revenues and local control for the sake of our families, the academic success of our children, and the economic health of our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chris, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank the speaker and those who are here today to help support this and your due diligence in coming at all of our meetings. It is making a difference. Mr. Merrill, you've been working to craft a proposed budget. There's been changes along the way. One of the areas that has been significantly important to me is this one. What do we have in the budget at this point towards the $10 million?
Currently, in the recommended budget that I'll be delivering, we're setting aside $3 million of one-time funding for next year.
Is that a beginning point or is that an ending point?
Oh, very much a beginning point. We'll be bringing to the board either the second meeting in June or the meeting in July, a comprehensive look at a recommended plan for affordable housing to include the money that we contribute from a general fund point of view.
So you are making every earnest effort to try to reach that $10 million point?
We're making an effort to try to create a comprehensive approach to solving affordable housing because it's not just our responsibility, it's the larger community's responsibility, including employers, including the builder development community. And so whether it's $10 million or whatever the number is, it has to be part of a larger approach to solving the problem.
But the $3 million is a starting point.
It's a starting point, exactly. Not an ending point, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, this is, this is a really important project, and I think Cheryl Howell and her team want to applaud you for the great work you've been doing on this. You're meeting with a lot of people, and I know Bonnie Wise, you all have been working together on developing private partners and all the financing possibilities, and I think it's really moving along. Really good. So, okay, thank you, Char Lurch. And then the last speaker is Terrence Wolf.
Good morning. I am Char Lurch, a parishioner at Nativity Catholic Church, and I've spoke to you several times on this. We are one of the many churches that are part of the Hillsborough Organization for Progress and Equality. I'm here to speak about how everybody deserves a place to call home. In April, we were glad you, as the commissioners, were taking a step forward to address the seriousness of the housing crisis faced by struggling working families in Hillsborough County. On April 18th, you approved a motion to direct staff to prepare a report identifying affordable housing resources by using a percentage of new revenues generated from the increasing property values of multifamily rental dwellings of 50 or more units or other reliable revenue sources that could contribute approximately $10 million annually toward affordable housing. Your directive was assigned to county administrative staff, who were then to bring a report back to you on May 16th at the BOCC meeting. Yet this report was not presented to you at the May 16 meeting as you directed. And since this item of identifying affordable housing revenue sources was to be addressed during the budget process, we thought it would be presented and discussed in a budget workshop scheduled for May, June, or July. Yet in looking at the county calendar, we noticed both budget workshops in May were canceled. The two June budget workshops are canceled, and the June public hearing is canceled. And now the July 17 budget workshop is canceled. Will the remaining July public hearing and budget workshops be canceled as well? We had hoped you were moving forward, and I understand that the $3 million that was just identified is a great start, but that wasn't part of the report, and it hasn't been reported. And when will we get the chance to hear that report presented to you here at the BOCC meetings so that we can speak on it? Will there be a, will, when will the public be presented with this? And will there still be a July 19 public hearing and a July 24 public budget workshop? And then the final July 26 reconciliation workshop, as shown on the county calendar? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Terrence Wolf?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, we've been hearing from HOPE for a number of years about affordable housing, and they continuously talk about developing, first with the trust fund, now our fund, because I understand the trust fund would dedicate $10 million or whatever it may be every year to that particular fund. And as we look at what may happen this November and the possible downturn of the economy, that's going to present a problem. Mr. Merrill has already said the $3 million is a start. One of the things I told them the last time I talked to them is that, yes, Hillsborough County government has a responsibility for affordable housing, but also the state of Florida has a responsibility for affordable housing. And I asked you all if you had talked to our local delegation. I don't think that you had talked to our local delegation. I think the time has come for this board, since we're going to be very serious about affordable housing, and what happens in Hillsborough County as we continue to grow, that people who can't afford a million-dollar house but must have a roof over their heads, that a collaborative effort between this Board of County Commissioners and our local delegation start to work together to look at affordable housing. We have elections coming up. I know possibility of changes on this board or our delegation, whatever the case may be. So I'm going to make a recommendation that after the November elections, that this board... So I'm going to make a recommendation that after the November elections, that this board and our local delegation, and I start about maybe at their, at their Hillsborough County delegation meeting, but there's so much on their agenda at that particular point in time that maybe we need to look at having a one-on-one conversation with our delegation and this board and maybe bring some people from Hope to talk about the fact that constantly the legislature raids the Sadowski Fund and put those dollars someplace else. They did it when I was there, when Commissioner Murman was there and Commissioner Chris was there. We constantly raided the Sadowski Fund, plugging empty holes that all these major projects that members wanted to take home were funded. So I don't know if I want to, I might, I'm trying to think if I want to make a motion at this particular point in time to do that. Yeah, I'm going to make a motion that after the November elections, that this Board of County Commissioners and our local delegation bring together a meeting to specifically talk about affordable housing and what we can do to bring about dollars from the state to help Hillsborough County, whatever we put in the budget, to address affordable housing issues. We could talk about homes being built in Hillsborough County, because I just met with some developers yesterday, and developing affordable housing and what they can do to work to put money forth in affordable housing. So my motion is after the November elections, and I ask staff to set up a date and work on that, that our delegation from the legislature and our Board of County Commissioners and if heart, if heart, if, Lord have mercy, if, if Hope wants to join us in that meeting to look at what can we do to have more dollars for affordable housing in Hillsborough County.
I'll second that.
That is, that is a great idea. Thank you. And actually, other than asking for money for roads, this should be our next priority to work with them on and get them to help us. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'd just like to remind the board that we did vote in support of sending a letter to our local delegation, asking them to stop raiding the Sadowski Funds. I don't think I've seen that go across my desk yet, so.
No, usually those letters are just signed by the chair and then they go right to the delegation.
The garbage can.
And also to lobby, right, and to lobby in support of stopping raiding the Sadowski Fund. So I think this is an excellent follow-up to make it even stronger, because I think we need to have a strong presence about this. As I remember from the earlier meeting, I think we were getting something like $4 million this year, but it would have been 11 million if the fund hadn't been raided. And that's where the bigger source of dollars are for this and the state is suffering and we're suffering terribly from a lack of affordable housing. So I think to do a more robust effort and to work with Hope in that way also would be, is an excellent suggestion.
And Commissioner Miller, I would like to add something. I think we need to invite City Council to be there also, because they're a partner in this too. I mean, there is affordable projects in the city and there is affordable projects unincorporated. So we all got to work together.
Let me withdraw my motion and make another motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that in November, this Board of County Commissioners, along with the Tampa City Council, along with our affordable housing staff and legislative delegation, sit down to have a meeting to discuss what we all can do to bring forth dollars for affordable housing. Our staff will work on putting those things together. That's my motion.
Okay, and a second. So there's a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Higginbotham, you're recognized.
Should you include all three municipalities in that rather than just Tampa?
Oh, Plant City and Temple Terrace?
Yes.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Make your motion, make sure we include that.
Okay, remove your motion again and restate it.
I'm going to make a motion that everybody in the world, no, make a motion that our Hillsborough County County Commissioners, after November elections, Hillsborough County County Commissioners, along with the City of Tampa, Plant City, and Temple Terrace, have a meeting with our local legislative delegation to discuss, when our staff works on putting that meeting together, to discuss the funding of affordable housing within Hillsborough County and what the legislature can do to assist us in that also have our affordable housing staff and anyone from Hope who wants to be enjoying that, enjoy that meeting to discuss the funding of affordable housing in Hillsborough County. That's my motion.
Second.
Okay. We had too many people will be in the convention center. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank you for that addition, Commissioner Murman, which I think is a really important one to be thinking about, because as we all know, the, one of the greatest aspects of affordable housing is that it be connected to transit. Families that can do with one car instead of two can save up to $10,000 a year, doing with no cars, it can save up to $10,000 a year. And it can really promote the fiscal health of families and serve that. So to have affordable housing placed in places that are dense with transit available is really what we can do best to serve our community. So I can, so I very much appreciate that addition.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. I see no further discussion. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, and our last speaker is Terrence Wolf. Good morning, Terrence.
Good morning, Madam Chairman. I'm Terrence Wolf. I live at 3411 East 22nd Avenue here in Tampa. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am back today to again mark the anniversary on June 12th of the murder in 2016 of 49 of our fellow Americans and the grievous injury of scores more at the Pulse nightclub up the road from us in Orlando. It was the deadliest mass murder of gay people and their friends in American history. It may seem perhaps a weak form of remembrance to simply put people's faces and names up on a screen and watch as they go quickly by, but this is one of the ways our culture has settled on remembering those who have had their lives cut short, whether in serving in our country's military or as defenders of our communities in law enforcement, or now in case after case after case, simply attending school or enjoying an open-air concert in a major American city or dancing the night away during Gay Pride Month in Florida. We have a sickness here in America and we have to figure it out. Alas, here in Hillsborough County, we still have no official remembrance of the people who died during the Pulse massacre and yet we should. And so I have come here before you again today to remember on your account and to show the faces and the names of those who were taken from us. Though it is evil and absurd to suffer death for no reason other than to have been out of one's house among one's community celebrating a common identity and a common liberation, one can think of such deaths as themselves political acts. Gay people are certainly not the only ones who are made to die for no reason other than being who they are. But my community continues to suffer hostility and discrimination throughout our culture and every step out of the closet, whatever the consequence, hopefully moves the cause of equality forward. As former San Francisco City Councilman Harvey Milk once famously said, "If a bullet should enter my brain, let that bullet destroy every closet door." I say, as I said last year, that those who would make the purveying of terror their life's work must know that they work their violence and discard their own lives in vain. Violence directed against a free people produces only resilience and solidarity. We march in the streets. We come here, Madam Chairman, for public comment. We write letters and make telephone calls and we refuse to cower in fear or shame as evidence of that. I appreciate being able to speak today. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much and thank you for reminding us of the terrible accident, an odd accident, terrible incident that happened, tragedy that happened in, at the Pulse nightclub in Orlando. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now done with our speakers and do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Hagan. Without further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, and Mr. Merrill, we're on the agenda.
Yes, 10:00 AM time certain, F2, Commissioner Hagan's item.
Thank you. I'm going to, this should be brief. I know we're running, running behind. This issue involves the Calm Harbor community in Lutes, small neighborhood, approximately 26 customers. I added this agenda, this item to the agenda because I know it's easy for, at times for smaller neighborhoods to get left behind. Due to poor water quality, the county purchased the utility that serves this neighborhood three years ago. Since the fall, we've been inundated with complaints regarding multiple water service outages, three times within a week recently. I know the system has had numerous reliability issues. Almost all mechanical and electrical components have been replaced, but this is a public health issue. George, can you come up, please? Can you update us on what the plan is to correct the problems and end the service outages? And since this is a public health concern, will you please do everything you can to expedite a solution?
Yes, Commissioner, thank you. And this is probably one of the highest priorities we have right now, is to connect the Calm Harbor community to our drinking water system. We had a plan to do that for the last three years, not only that particular franchise or old franchise, but the other two that we acquired at the same time, which are in the same general area. So as we would normally plan and design and, you know, put a project in place, this one has taken a little bit of a different path, mostly because, well, all because of the reliability issues. We have 70-plus systems like this across the county. You know, our own fire stations, our own parks departments, they have private wells that we maintain for those particular departments. We apply the same kind of care and nurturing across all of our systems, because at the end of the day, you know, our obligation is to provide quality services, quality drinking water. The Calm Harbor well that we acquired was in mechanical disrepair when we purchased it. We replaced the pumps, we've replaced the control panels, we've replaced service tanks, and still there seems to be continuing issues. We don't know what the problem with that well is. We don't know if there's a, an issue with the well itself pulling water out of the ground. We think we've solved everything. We've gone several times to replace pumps. So where we are right now is to expedite the connection of that community to our water system. The nearest water is about 3,500 feet away. We are looking at a quick design to be able to permit that project for construction through DOH and through DEP. We think that can happen pretty quickly. We're working with procurement to find a path forward to expeditiously be able to construct the line once we've completed the permitting activity. And we do, we have, we have a pathway. The department has a miscellaneous construction contract for pipeline repair and pipeline installation. The work order authorization limits are restricted to a certain level. We're coming to you on the 20th to seek approval, to expand that work order authorization limit to be able to build this pipeline. Given that authorization, we can begin probably in July and be done probably end of September.
Could you identify yourself with the record, sir?
George Cassidy, Public Utilities.
So you're thinking the end of September?
Yes, sir. If all goes well, you know, we've got plenty of good weather to be able to install pipeline and there aren't any challenges along the way, I think, I think that's a good schedule.
Okay. I'm just asking you to please, please do everything you can to expedite it. Not only have the calls been coming into the office, I'm sure Commissioner Chris and others have been getting them as well, but a good friend of mine who's the number-two park director at the City of Tampa lives there and I get, you know, I got a text, "May 29th, just a heads up, the water went out again." And so I know they're getting, they're getting slammed pretty hard, so.
And we apologize to the community. It has been a back-to-back and it, it has gotten to the point where we have actually assigned one of our operations and maintenance staff members to be there almost all the time to make sure that we kind of babysit this thing along with the next couple of months.
Okay. Well, definitely appreciate your help to ensure that the smaller neighborhood doesn't get left behind and we expedite a solution.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And George, can I just ask you a question? Are you, you're working on those, a plan to help get all those other 70 people on county water?
So it's a logistics issue, Commissioner, where it's located in proximity to where our nearest infrastructure is.
Okay.
So for our fire stations, for libraries, for certain parks, they're so far out, it just, it's impractical to be able to run lines out there. Where they are closer to the infrastructure, like this particular case, it's not so far out. We can do that, it makes sense. Yes, ma'am, the answer is yes. We'll take all of them offline as soon as we can.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any action? Nope? Okay, thank you for your report. Mr. Merrill?
Your 10:15 time certain, B9.
Morning Commissioners, Tom Thetler, Management and Budget Department. Item B9 is asking you to adopt a resolution authorizing, among other things, the issuance of the county's community investment tax refunding revenue bond, Series 2018, and the principal amount of $70 million to refinance certain commercial paper notes and certain other capital projects, including transportation. The item also asks you to approve various other actions necessary to complete the transaction and to approve a budget amendment associated with it. What this transaction will effectively do is free up about $51 million in commercial paper capacity, which will allow us to continue to finance our projects, cash flow our projects on a recurring basis, specifically when the transportation area, to help facilitate the transportation plan that you adopted. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Higginbotham to approve item B9. Is there any questions or discussions? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
That concludes your time certens to the regular agenda. Item B1, Children's Services.
Good morning. Joanne Rollins, Children's Services. This morning, we were seeking approval for childcare licensing, contract number CCL-SR-1819 in the amount of $1,058,904 with the Early Learning Coalition. This contract will fund 15 childcare licensing inspection positions, inspectors positions, I'm sorry, and operating cost. The childcare licensing program will provide regulatory services, technical assistance, training, inspections, and enforcement of county ordinances and state statutes to childcare licensing centers and homes. We're also seeking approval for the fiscal year 2018-19 contract agreement between Hillsborough County and Early Learning Coalition, whereby the county pays the Early Learning Coalition $250,000 plus 75% of the fines and fees collected by the childcare licensing program. This will not exceed 50% of the annual amount awarded in the actual contract we're seeking today. The agreement allows for the Early Learning Coalition to maximize the amount of subsidized childcare funds for families in Hillsborough County. And final consideration is to approve a budget amendment to approve $240,000 within Children's Services intergovernmental grant budget in order to bring the budget back in line with the grant actually awarded of the $1,058,904. Any questions?
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner White. I just wanted to ask County Attorney, we can approve all these three items together?
Yes.
Okay. And I see no further discussion. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
In the County Attorney's Office section, we have four items that relate to the charter and consulting with Christine, we need to take them in a certain order. And so B3 will be the last item taken in that section, B2 through B5. So we'll begin with B2, then go to B4, B5, and then B3. So B2, Mary Helen.
Good morning Commissioners, Mary Helen Ferris with the County Attorney's Office. B2 is a review of a draft ordinance proposing nonpartisan election of constitutional officers. It's fairly straightforward, similar to the language in the Polk County Charter. If this is approved by the board and placed on the ballot and If this is approved by the board and placed on the ballot and it's approved, it would go into effect in 2020. The way it's set up is that the nonpartisan races would be on the primary election. If no one wins a majority, the top two candidates then go to the general. The request here is to get direction from the board to schedule for public hearing. I believe June 20th is the, there's a board date that day, or we can have the night hearing that was discussed earlier. But that's.
Okay, so we have, we need to make a motion today to take it to public hearing. We have a motion by Commissioner Higginbotham, seconded by Commissioner Hagan on item B2. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank Commissioner Higginbotham for bringing this forward. I've always questioned why our constitutional officers run on a partisan ticket. I know the respective political parties like to highlight which offices are held by their party, but this designation is more symbolic than anything else. I do not understand the relevance of a partisan tax collector sheriff, and I certainly do not want a partisan election supervisor, so that's why I seconded the motion to move it to the public hearing.
Okay. I don't see any other questions or discussion. We are on item B2, motion by Commissioner Higginbotham, seconded by Commissioner Hagan. Seeing no further discussion, please accord your vote. This is to go to public hearing.
Correct.
Motion carried four to two. Commissioners Kemp and Miller voted no.
I think you said four to two, it's actually five to two.
Sorry, motion carried five to two. Commissioners Kemp and Miller voted no. My apologies.
Very good, thank you.
Item B4.
The next item then would be B4, and this is the ordinance that has been discussed previously. It requires 60% of the vote for a charter amendment, and again, the direction from the board whether to set it for public hearing on June 20th.
Okay. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
This was the item that I asked to be considered, and the reason I did that is because of the mere fact is that in the state of Florida, to change the Constitution, it takes 60% of the electorate to pass any issue to amend the Constitution. I thought the same should be relevant to Hillsborough County, so that's the item that I placed forward to go on the ballot, so I move item B4.
We have a motion by Commissioner Miller to approve item B4. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Higginbotham. Is there any further discussion? Oh, Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I just wanted to state again for the record that I would be in support of this idea if it was the only issue on the ballot, but if it appears, but it appears that this might be on that ballot with more controversial proposals, and I'm deeply concerned that voters may pass this along with a more controversial amendment that they may regret and lock in other bad proposals by requiring a 60% vote to repeal it. So I'll be a no vote on that, but that's my concern.
Okay. And this is to go to public hearing, so just to remind everybody, this isn't the final vote on the issue. So we have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Higginbotham to go to public hearing on item B4. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Hagan and Kemp voted no.
B5?
B5 is the proposal, actually, there's an alternative to it for nine single-member districts, and the alternative is eight single-member districts with elected countywide chair. Once again, the request here is to receive direction from the board as to how to proceed.
Okay, thank you very much, and I would like to make a comment before we go into board discussion. After looking at both drafts of the ordinance that I asked you to prepare, and of course the second one dealt with the population growth and the elected county chair, I think there appeared to me that there, and probably with some of the other members, though we can't speak to each other, that there might have been some confusion about exactly what it all means. The item I actually want to bring forward is the single-member districts that are tied to population because of the growth. And I think I've told you all, the reason I'm doing this is to really try to bring us closer to the people we serve. I would like to delete the countywide chair, elected countywide chair at this time, and delete the reference to the specific number of districts. So after discussing all this with the county attorney, I think this would have to be redrafted. And we have talked about this because the changes are substantial and it is confusing about what we would be moving forward. I brought the population concept forward, really based on comparison purposes to the original nine-member district proposal. We have time, I'm proposing that this go on the ballot in 2020 and implement after the redistricting in 2022, so we don't have to reshuffle or recalculate. My desire to do this really hasn't changed. We are a very, very fast-growing community, our diversity is increasing as fast as our population. I do think that this redistricting does bring our constituents' representation to a reasonable level, to provide better customer service, and it brings us closer to the people. The Hispanic and African-American populations, it would be an historic move for them, especially Hispanic population, to have them have a district. And I want to thank Commissioner Miller for also making sure that the planning commission is involved in the process, but I am going to defer the item till we get it drafted correctly and bring it back to us so we can have a discussion at the right time.
Okay.
So that, B5. Do I have to make a motion to defer it?
If it might help just for the record.
Okay, so I'm going to pass the gavel, I'm making a motion to defer item B5 to a later time and making a motion, so.
So we have a motion?
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
There won't be a second.
What's the motion?
To defer item B5.
Justice, do you make a motion?
Second.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
And we have Commissioner Kemp and Commissioner Miller in the queue.
All right, Commissioner Miller?
Since she's deferring it to whenever.
Later.
Later. You're deferring it so they can work on language for nine single-member districts to go on the ballot in 2020?
No, it actually would not be a specific number of districts stated in the ordinance, it would be based on population. So, and these are all numbers, I need to verify the numbers, but I had in there 135,000 people per district. I actually think that's too low, and so it just, it needs to be reworked to make it more accurate and valid to come here.
So let me ask you a question. If you're talking about 135,000 per district with 1.4 million, 1.5 million people, I haven't done the math, how many districts are you talking about? That could really increase the numbers.
Well, actually, the population, well, I don't have the, the population says when it reaches 190,000, a requisite number of county commission seats would need to be created to bring the number down to 135,000, but I think it should be 150. It would, you know, there's several things, and we could have it in a board discussion when we bring it back, to have a minimum of certain single-member districts or a maximum of single-member districts, but it needs to be adjusted based on the population numbers.
Well.
It's basically at 135, it would be nine.
14 districts.
Right. And that's not realistic.
So my question to you is why, if we're talking about population and we're knowing that with the growth, you're talking about anywhere between 14 and 15 county commission districts, why are you not putting a specific number on that?
Because I don't want a certain number. I want it based on population growth.
I can't support that, because if we do that, if you're talking about population growth and you're asking the staff to go back and look at 135,000, 140,000, and this county continues to grow, we're looking at expanding this county commission, doubling the size, really over.
At 190,000, which is in here, it would be the seven single-member districts. I mean, that, those numbers would be up to us. It's not, you know, and it requires discussion. I think this is a moot point. I'm asking to defer it and.
But you're also asking to bring something back.
Well, who knows when it will come back.
Okay, Commissioner Kemp, you're in the queue.
So we're, but we're clear that this will be for the 2020 ballot?
Right.
Okay, wanted to clarify that. I also think that it's, wouldn't be appropriate to predicate the seats based on the numbers of the district or of the county. Right now, I know we've looked at other counties, Palm Beach County, which is, I think, 400,000 bigger than us, still has seven seats, and, you know, that is not unusual. I actually looked around at some different county examples around the country, and I've looked at ones in Florida before, but I looked at Montgomery County, Maryland, I grew up in the DC area, Prince George's County, Montgomery County, which I thought was a really well-managed county, and I was very curious about what their government was like. They're a million-person county, a fast-growing county, and they have seven members, and they have, I'm sorry, nine members, and they have four at-large and five single-member districts. And I'd really like to put forward that notion to give us more flexibility, but it's an easy transition, but I, again, very much appreciate government that would allow for each citizen to continue what they now enjoy in Hillsborough County, which is the right to vote for a majority of the commission at any given time. And so I think the at-large districts are really important to have, a balance in government. I think it's a really good form of government that we have here, and I would not like to have it automatically triggered up every time with population growth. I think that that's not necessarily a model for the future, so I'm not sure if, at this time, along with your, that I need to make a motion to have that be part of the reconsideration, or maybe I should.
Sure.
Make that motion independently?
We can, you know, when I bring it back, we can bring it back with several options. We can bring it back with what you just mentioned, and I don't know when this will come back. As you know, we have an abbreviated schedule from the end of this month, and it, well, it's not going to be on the ballot this year because we don't have enough time.
And I agree with you totally, and, but I just think that that would be a, okay, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, so there's plenty of options.
And I would like to really look at it with that model in mind, because I think that that would be a really good model and allow us to deal with population growth.
Okay, very good, thanks.
Commissioner Hagan?
Hagan.
Yeah, I'll just say that I support deferring the item because there were several issues in the draft ordinance that I had concerns with. However, I also have concerns regarding a population-based model. If you use a population of 1.4 million with 135,000 per district, that's 10.37 commissioners, and if you use a 1.5 million and 135 commissioners, that's 11.11 commissioners. So I do have concerns on utilizing this approach. Nevertheless, I do support deferring it and bringing back options at the appropriate time that we can consider.
Thank you. Okay, something I think is wrong with my computer, because when I call on someone, the whole screen goes blank, everybody else drops off.
Yeah, mine too.
Yeah, line three.
So, so I think, who else, Miller, are you next?
Commissioner.
I was, but I'm going to defer my comments and let's see what happens with the motion.
Okay, Commissioner White, you were after Commissioner Miller.
Yeah, I, I'm willing to vote in the affirmative, to dispose of the issue before us today and, you know, see what comes back and, you know, address it on its merits at that time. So I'll vote in the affirmative today for those reasons.
Okay, I have a comment, and Commissioner Miller, did you want to speak out?
I'm back, I want to get back in the queue. So the motion, to clarify the motion, the motion is to defer this particular issue and bring back language that deals with a population-based district, is that what you're doing?
Well, and Commissioner Kemp wants her item considered, so we'll just have a full board discussion on several options. I'm hearing that a lot of people don't like the population-based model, so that's why I think if we bring something back, it should have several options. Is there something you want to add?
So, no, no, I'm really, really, but I'm trying to get clarification on your motion, so what are you asking the staff?
I'm deferring item B5.
But you're asking them to bring something back?
No, I'm not, I'm not asking to bring anything back. I just said if and when I bring this back, it will have, it will be more specific and not vague like it is right now.
So you're deferring everything and not asking to bring anything back?
Absolutely. I'm not asking to bring anything back.
I'm going to go ahead and go on the record and comment on this. While I have strong reservations on this idea, because I have seen the Commissioner Jan Platt's plan that was put in motion, which is what we have today, work, and I think it works well, and I know that other counties have followed suit with what Jan Platt's legacy set forward, and if it ain't broke, why fix it? So Commissioner Kemp, I agree with your position on this, and, but out of respect to my colleague who I've had an opportunity to work with for nearly three decades, I would be willing, like Commissioner White, to allow you to work this through the process, to see what the final outcome is, and then reserve my vote to the package that is part of your final completion. So out of respect to you, Madam Chair, I will vote to the affirmative to allow you to postpone this, and if you bring it back, I'm asking that the county administrator allow enough time for good sturdy debate, because we don't know what would come back. It may be something great, it may not be, I don't know, but I think it's worthy of our sole attention.
Oh, yeah. And, you know, my whole purpose of this discussion was to prepare us for the future. I mean, we will be by 2030, that's 12 years from now, at a population of 1.8 million people. And so I think we just need to have a discussion here on our structure, and we'll all end up agreeing on what we think is the best way to go. I certainly don't want to propose something that is not agreeable to all of us as a body. So, okay, so.
Motion.
Okay, so seeing no one else in the queue, we have a motion, we have a second to temporarily postpone this.
No, defer.
All right, to defer this issue. The clerk will open the queue and we shall vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
And item B3?
Back on, oh, B2, B3?
B3.
B3.
This is the proposal that Commissioner Kemp brought up regarding term limits, and we've discussed this previous board meetings, and I'm just ready to receive whatever direction the board would tell me to go.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Kemp, do you want to make any opening comments, because this was your item?
Thank you. I originally proposed this with the current structure in mind. I know I've heard a lot from the public with regards to the, what they believe was the spirit and intent of the charter to actually have term limits on, in place. The term limits are basically, don't work, because people can, under our current charter, switch from single districts to at-large, and then from at-large back to single districts again, creating what is no real term limits, and I've heard a lot. And I've heard a lot from people that they are objecting to that as a, as a way to continue. I know in other counties across Florida, we did, at the last point of discussion, saw that everyone practically had a firm, actual eight, or one of them a 12-year term limit. So I was looking at that and knowing that we won't be looking at a different structure right now, I will, I was ready to withdraw that considering the other structure. I wasn't sure how that was going to work with all the overlying confusion. But I'd like to go forward and be looking at a three-term, term limit.
As an amendment to the ordinance.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so I, I guess I want to just ask, is that substantial enough that?
Well, I haven't advertised the title yet. I was waiting until
Oh, you haven't, okay.
To do the advertisement. And I haven't done the draft. And Commissioner Kemp, just so I understand, so it's just three terms, period? So if you happen to get a two-year term, then you could get, so it could be three, just three terms, no matter if you're a single member or at-large?
I would say so, but if there's other thoughts about that, but I'm thinking basically a 12-year term limit, up to 12 years, three terms up to 12 years.
Okay, let's get into board discussion, then we'll see where we, where we get to. Commissioner White, you're recognized. Oh, see, there again. It happened.
That's strange.
So it was White, Hagan, and?
Chris.
Chris that were next, so it's just.
No, Chris was before Hagan.
Oh, you hadn't, okay, okay.
It was White and Chris.
Well, I just.
They need to have, if you can pause a second, they really need to have somebody check the machines? I'll write them down when they all first start in the queue, but there's something wrong with it. Okay, thanks.
Well, I just want to once again state for the record that I have no issue with ironclad term limits for this board. However, as a matter of, of public policy and as a matter of procedure, I really feel strongly that this issue should travel alongside, you know, what we're going to do with respect to the composition of this board. You know, we could potentially send this out for a vote. And then, you know, heaven forbid, if something does change in the next, you know, two to four years, then, you know, we could be in a position where we've actually expanded term limits, depending on how everything gets structured. So I'm more than willing to have debate and, and address the term limit issue on its merits. But I do feel like that should be done alongside any debate or discussion on what we're going to do with the composition of the board. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to defer this item as well.
Okay, we have a motion to defer item B3. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chris. And Commissioner Chris, you're recognized.
I too am a supporter and have been a supporter of term limits. But I also understand the dynamics and the learning curve of serving in different positions in office. Having served in the House, having served in the Senate, now having served in this county commission, I have observed that there is a substantial learning curve. And you need time to be able to anchor yourself as someone of authority, to be able to wield the clout, to get the things done. You can't just get elected, sit on this board, and expect to be delivering for your constituents. That doesn't happen. So the term limits need to be set in what I consider to be reasonable. The Jan Platt plan allowed for two four-year terms in any given seat and then out. I like that because it constantly turns over this board and puts you in a vulnerable position to run for a new seat, and the, and the clock starts over. And it puts you in a position where you're judged by your constituents. And if someone new wants to come in, they could much easily take you out. And we all understand that here. There is a difference between a single-member seat and a countywide seat. A lot of the day-to-day stuff goes to the single-member districts. We get caught up with the administrative work of filling potholes and picking up trash. A lot of the larger philosophical issues, like baseball, okay? Mass transportation. Those tend to be the bigger issues that your countywide commissioners focus on because they involve a countywide constituency, and they are countywide. Like the House and Senate, you have eight years and you're out in the House, and eight years you're out in the Senate. Senate districts are three times bigger than a House seat. On this board, countywide seats are four times bigger than a single-member seat. I support eight years in a single-member seat, and then eight years in a countywide seat, and then you're done. And if you want to modify this to say that you can't come back and run for any other seat, you'll have me. But to cut it short and say you can only, you were going to make it just 12 years, period, I think extends and does away with the eight-year term limit that we have in place. It allows an entrenched incumbent to remain entrenched. It doesn't allow for the expertise, the additional clout and power that you earn in a single-member district, to flourish in a countywide seat to get the bigger jobs done.
Okay, who is, who was next, either of you? Commissioner Hagan? Commissioner Miller?
Yes, let me get a clear understanding of what Commissioner Chris just said. I'm, I'm a little confused. Commissioner Chris, are you supporting eight years in any seat and then you're done?
I'm supporting eight years in a single-member seat and the opportunity to do eight years in a countywide seat, and then you're done.
So you're saying John Q. Public can serve eight years in a single-member district, and then run for a at-large seat, serve eight years there?
I'm saying that you have the option to serve eight years in both of those seats because I believe them to be uniquely different, with uniquely different issues. But you would not be able to serve more than 16 years on this board, period. Just like you're not able to serve more than 16 years in the legislative process.
And Commissioner Murman, okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kemp, your, your issue is that you serve in a single-member district for eight, 12 years, and you're done. You can't, you can't flip over to a countywide seat.
With her, with her proposal, she's allowing.
I'm talking to Commissioner Kemp.
Okay, let, yeah, let him, her.
No, no, not a single-member district because we're not.
You're saying, what, what does your proposal say?
I, I had 12 years in total, three terms. So it could be two-term, single-member district, one term at-large, two terms at-large, one term, single-member.
Could it be three, three, four-year terms and a single member? Because that's the way it sounds to me. When you say 12 years total, are you saying 12 years if you want to serve 12 years in a single member?
No, that's not what I wanted, no.
But what about the two-year thing? You know, Commissioner Miller and I both had to run again after we got elected because we had initial two-year term because redistricting. And that's going to kick in again in 2020, so, on the single member. So how does that play in? I think that's why I'm going to support Commissioner White's proposal. I think we should defer it till it's all clear. Maybe you can answer my question.
I would also say it can bear clarification due to the changes that have been suggested. But even if we were to make, under the current charter, but I think we could, we could turn this over, I think it would be best, as I understand, the Charter Review Commission is going to be appointed again next year?
Correct. This typical schedule is in the fall. I'll be asking each board member to appoint two members to the Charter Review Board. They typically start meeting in February. There's an organizational meeting. They can meet up to one year. Because it's 2000, or 2020, they can put something on the ballot in 2020 and also in 2022 if they work fast enough to put something on the ballot the same year that they convene.
So, so I will change my motion to ask at this.
There's already a motion on the floor by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Chris.
I'm sorry.
To defer item B3. So is that what you were going to propose, to defer it?
That, and to refer to the Charter Commission for review, which I guess it all will be at any rate.
Well, because, yes, when we appoint them, then you could address that and make that an issue to go in front Charter Review, so. Okay, Commissioner Chris?
Again, I will state, I support the term limit idea. And I, and I like the fact that you're, you're trying to open the door for new blood on the board. What I'm saying is, right now, we're allowed to do two terms in a single member, two terms in a countywide, come back and do two terms in a single member, go back and do two terms in a countywide, and keep bouncing back and forth until you die. And I agree, that needs to stop. But I, I clearly see the difference between what my do as a single-member district commissioner and what you and Commissioner Hagan do as countywide commissioner. Your issues are uniquely different and much broader in scope and affect more people. Your issues take time. You're not going to get what you're here to achieve in your first term. Just like he wasn't able to get what he is trying to achieve done in his first term. Eight is enough. Eight years in a single member, eight years in a countywide, and you're off this board. Done. If you make that motion and you do that amendment, you stop what is perceived by the public to be the problem. And the problem is the bouncing back and forth and back and forth and back and forth multiple times. You end it. You say you're only allowed to serve one two-year term in each position, and you're done.
Okay, Commissioner White, you're recognized. And then Commissioner Hagan.
I'll keep this brief, Madam Chair. If the composition of this board remains the same, I wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Chris. Eight years in a single-member district, which you can liken to serving in a lower house, and eight years in an at-large seat, which you can liken to serving in an upper house. However, if the composition of the board changes and we end up with all single-member districts of X number, you name the number, then I like Commissioner Kemp's idea, something like a three, four-year term scenario that adds up to 12 years. Since it, there still seems to be this idea that something could come back that will address possibly changing the composition of this board, that's why I like the idea of going ahead and just deferring this item for now and to readdress it alongside the discussion on the composition of the board.
I agree, I support. Commissioner Hagan?
Yeah, I'll make my comments brief. I think it's an excellent discussion. I personally support term limits. Commissioner Chris makes several excellent points. You know, as a former district commissioner, now as a countywide commissioner, I can tell you, as a countywide commissioner allows you to be less parochial and take a broader, more macro perspective with, with respect to policymaking. So I completely agree with you on that, Commissioner Chris. I do, I also agree with Commissioner White in that the board composition and term limit discussion should occur at the same time. Now, I don't know if that is through the Charter Review process, or if that's through these concepts coming back to the board for discussion. Whenever that is, I think it should be done at the same time because if not, you potentially set up a situation where you have competing interests or competing issues, and that certainly is something that we want to avoid. So all I'm suggesting is, when we have the discussion, and that could be a board discussion or through the Charter Review Process, I'm not suggesting which route is better, but they should be taken up at the same time.
Thank you. Great comments by everybody, good discussion. We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Chris, to defer item B3. Seeing no further discussion, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Yes.
As one point of clarification, so we have the nonpartisan, originally the board was going to have on the 20th at 6:00 PM. Now that there's just this proposal, should it be a 10:00 AM during the regular board meeting for the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
And there's actually two items.
Okay, we have a motion by, and we have two, the 60% and the, so we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan to take this up under our regular public hearing schedule
Both hours.
On June 20th. And we have a second by Commissioner Hagan Botham. Commissioner Hagan, do you want to make any further comments? Okay, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Mary Helen.
Thank you, Mary Helen. Really, she's worked very hard on this. Thank you very much. Worked very hard, okay.
We have three Head Start items, B6, B7, B8. And Jacqueline, why don't you just do your other staff report at the same time?
Thank you, Mrs. Ray. Good morning, Commissioners. Jacqueline Jenkins, Head Start, early Head Start Department. B6 is asking for approval to submit a 2.6 COL increase. The, the dollars will be used to offset cost of salary increases paid in fiscal year 18, some excess prior funding levels, and then also associated county indirect costs.
Okay. Item B6, we have motion to approve by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner White and Hagan Botham. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Still missing Hagan, no, Chris, oh, there is, okay.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Okay.
B7 is seeking approval for a fiscal year 19 Head Start grant application. This is our regular grant, and we're seeking the approval to continue Head Start services.
Very good. You do a great job, too. We have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Kemp and Hagan Botham on item B7. Seeing no further discussion, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
B8 is seeking approval for, to submit an application for a one-time funding opportunity. Federal government gave us an opportunity to submit for some additional funds, and we're seeking approval to move forward with that.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Hagan Botham. Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, please accord your vote on item B8.
Motion carried, five to zero.
And G2?
G2 is actively seeking approval for our annual report. This report gives an outline of accomplishments from the prior year. Commissioners, I'd like to let you know the Head Start program is operating well. We're up in reference to homeless enrollment, apologize, and then also enrollment with the foster care kids. Your Policy Council members still are active in reference to supporting the board and what we do. Staff are involved also. And so again, I just want to thank you. Your Head Start program is operating very well.
Awesome. Do we have a waitlist?
Yes.
How many?
Collectively, it remains about 2,000 children. Now, this is with the school district, this is with Lutheran Services, this is with YMCA and ours also. But again, I'd just like to offer that the waitlist is not necessarily children who are waiting for an early childhood experience. They are with other programs, but they're just seeking Head Start opportunities.
Right. And I know the Early Learning Coalition
Yes.
Under the direction of Gordon Gillette now, they're working hard to get that waitlist down to zero.
Yes.
They're bringing in private partnerships and doing a lot to get that down. So I feel very good. I just hate to see a waitlist.
And with that also, Commissioner, we're also seeking other partners within the community to expand also. With the one-time application, the federal government has given us an opportunity to seek, you know, other facility options so that we can work with our waitlist issues. And so we're also working to do what we can do also. But also remember, a waitlist is considered a healthy part of a federal application and, and organization, so.
Okay, great. So we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Miller on item G2 to receive the report. Seeing no further discussion, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you. Procurement Services, B10 through B18.
Good morning, Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. Item B10 is asking the board to award the only bidders on State International Trucks LLC in the amount of $1,700,000. award to the only bidders on State International Trucks LLC in the amount of $1,78,934 for the purchase of six special-purpose vehicles for the Fleet Management Department, which will be used by the Public Works and Public Utilities Department. The Economic Development Department did not have three disadvantaged or small business enterprise firms registered for those specialized vehicles, therefore no participation goal or set aside was established. Procurement Services recommends approval.
Okay, we have item B10, motion to approve by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please accord your vote on item B10.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Item B11 is asking the board to award and execute a five-year agreement with the lowest response from responsible bidder, Southeast Drilling Services Incorporated, in the amount of $3,662,528 for ongoing and as-needed well drilling and related services throughout the county for the Public Utilities and Public Works Departments. The Economic Development Department did not have three disadvantaged or small business enterprise firms registered for the specialized services, therefore no participation goal or set aside was established. Procurement Services recommends approval.
Okay, we're on item B11. Action?
Move the item.
Motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B11. Seeing no further discussion, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Item B12 is asking the board to award a five-year sole-source contract to Barney's Pump Incorporated in the amount of $7,660,499.98 for various pumps, equipment, and related parts and services for the Public Utilities Department. The recommended vendor is the exclusive representative or authorized distributor in the state of Florida for the listed equipment, parts, and required services for the same. There are no subcontracting opportunities for disadvantaged business enterprises due to the exclusivity. Procurement Services recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. We're on item B12. We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Miller to approve item B12. Seeing no further discussion or questions, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Item B13 is asking the board to approve the solicitation parameters for Transportation Impact Fee Solicitation Number Four for the buyback of additional transportation impact fee offsets. The parameters include a maximum offer price of 8% of the offset book value. We've allotted $8,315,702.19 in available funds. All impact fee zones are eligible, and the minimum offset amount will be $1,000 or the full balance of the owner's account, and Procurement Services recommends approval.
Okay, we're on item B13. Motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner White. Seeing no further discussion or questions, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Item B4 is asking the board to award to the respective lowest response from responsible bidders, Allen J. Ford Lincoln Mercury Incorporated, Asbury Jacks Ford LLC Doing Businesses Cogan Ford, Bozard Ford Company, Duval Ford, Furman Motor Car Company Incorporated, Gator Ford Truck Sales Incorporated, and Jared Gordon Ford Incorporated for the purchase of 49 vehicles for the Fleet Management Department at a total cost of $1,661,251.35. The Economic Development Department did not have three disadvantaged or small business enterprise firms registered for the specified vehicles, therefore no participation goal or SBE set aside was established for the procurement. Funding for the procurement is available in the fiscal '18 Vehicle Replacement Fund and the Public Utilities Department's fiscal '18 capital budget. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Okay, we are, we are on item B14. We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan-Botham, seconded by Commissioner Hagan to approve item B14. Seeing no further discussion or questions, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Item B15 is asking the board to authorize the use of U.S. Communities Contract Number EV2370 with Graybar Electric Company Incorporated for ongoing and as-needed small purchases of electrical products by various county departments at an estimated cost of at least $2.5 million through January 31, 2023. This contract will allow departments to quickly acquire electrical products for a pre-approved electronic catalog to better support day-to-day operations. Procurement Services Department will monitor all purchases to ensure that the terms of the contract and the county's procurement policy and procedures are complied with. Individual department purchases will be monitored for contracting opportunities with disadvantaged and small business enterprises. Procurement Services recommends approval.
Okay, we are on item B15. We have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner White. Seeing no further discussion or questions, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Item B16 is asking the board to award a five-year sole-source contract to Decan International Corporation in the amount of $1,2,213 for the purchase of customizable proprietary programs associated with the county's existing computer-aided dispatch system for the fire rescue department. Resulting contract will require Decan to build a critical software solution that interfaces with the CAD system to support both real-time and long-term decisions and analyses. There are no subcontracting opportunities for disadvantaged business enterprises, as the recommended vendor will provide highly specialized and proprietary programs without the use of subcontractors. There are sufficient funds in the fire rescue, equipment, replacement, and modernization project and operating budget to accommodate award of the contract. Procurement Services recommends approval.
Okay, we're on item B16. Motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please accord your vote on item B16.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
You can do B18?
Item B18 is asking the board to award a contract to the highest-ranked and best-qualified proposer, Protiviti Incorporated, in the amount of $256,920 for specialized professional services to assist the county internal auditor in evaluating the efficiency and effectiveness of the Oracle Enterprise Risk Planning System and to determine if the system is functioning at an optimal level. The subject work is expected to take approximately eight months to complete. The opportunity for proposers to receive five bonus points by subcontracting a minimum of 10% of the ultimate fees to disadvantaged business enterprises was available. However, no proposers offered such participational requests to bonus points. Pursuant to Board Policy Number 02.11.00.00, this award recommendation is respectfully being presented to the Board for its consideration and approval. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Okay, we're on item B18. We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan-Botham, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please accord your vote on item B18.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thanks, Scott. B17, Strategic Planning Department.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rob Parkinson, Hillsborough County Criminal Justice Liaison. Item B17 is a modification to the interlocal agreement between the Board and the Administrative Office of the Courts, which supports the expansion of the Drug Court Pre-Trial Intervention Program. The program is funded by the Florida Department of Children and Families Mental Health Substance Abuse Grant Program. The modifications include updates to performance standards to allow for participants to attend college while on the program, a provision to allow the Administrative Office of the Courts to pay substance abuse providers directly with approval from the county's program manager, and a budget amendment realigning grant funds and related matching funds to a separate cost center to allow for more efficient tracking of the grant. Funding for the project is included in the fiscal year '18 adopted and fiscal year '19 planned budgets. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. We have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B17. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thanks, Rob. And Board Appointments, F1.
Hi, Luanne. Are you going to start with Children's Services? Okay, staff, I wanted to tell the board, staff is doing an assessment of Children's Services, and they're going to issue a report in 60 days, which may recommend more qualifications for the Children's Services Advisory Board. So, I'd like to just keep these appointments as is, right, not, not select any new appointees right now, and then we would re-advertise after the report is issued. That's what I got from staff.
I'll move to re-advertise for Children's Services.
Well, after, after the report is issued in 60 days.
I'll move to re-advertise after the report is issued in 60 days for Children's Services Advisory Board.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. Seeing no further discussion, please accord your vote. Thank you all.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
So your next board is your Healthcare Advisory Board. There are two positions. One of the positions is for the Health Insurance Industry Representative, and that will be Michael Newitt. So please choose one for the at-large representative, Commissioner Merman.
Thank you. Nine and 11.
Commissioner Chris?
Nine and 10.
Commissioner White?
Nine and 10.
Commissioner Miller?
Nine and 14.
Commissioner Hagan?
Nine and 11.
Commissioner Kemp?
Nine and 11.
Commissioner Hagan-Botham?
Nine and 11.
It will be Michael Newitt and Steve Friedman. Your next board is your Hospital Authority. Please choose one, Commissioner Merman.
I guess I'll go with 16.
Commissioner Chris?
Normally, I would go with 16, but in looking at the attendance, he missed 11 meetings, which are much more than he was present. He was only present seven. So I'm not sure he has the time to do this. So I'm going to have to say number 15.
Okay. Commissioner White?
I'll go with 15 as well.
Commissioner Miller?
16.
Commissioner Hagan?
16.
Commissioner Kemp?
16.
Commissioner Hagan-Botham?
16.
It will be Jerome Ryans.
Can we, I mean, is it possible, though, after we approve these guys, to tell them that attendance is-
Yes.
Is, would be, we would like to see an improvement in attendance.
Right, that's what we did with our last board, yes.
Okay, I think so.
And then your last board is your Tampa Bay Regional Transit Authority Citizens Advisory Committee. We have a member position open and an alternate position, and Mr. Prindle is the current alternate, seeking the member position. But choose, one of them is going to be the alternate, one of them is the member, so please choose the member, Commissioner Merman.
Just like to speak for one moment.
Oh, yes, please. You're, you're actually on T. Barde Board from the Commissioner's-
I'd just like to recommend strongly Hoyt Prindle for the member. He's been a really good representative as an alternative, alternate. I don't think he's ever missed a meeting all over the three regions, so I'm, his representation's really been stellar.
You're talking about number 17?
Uh-huh.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. Okay, so I'm going with 17.
Okay, Commissioner Chris?
I would agree, number 17 is the better choice.
Commissioner White?
17.
Commissioner Miller?
17.
Commissioner Hagan?
Same.
Commissioner Kemp?
17.
And Commissioner Hagan-Botham?
17.
It would be Hoyt Prindle as the member and Lauren Campbell as the alternate.
Move to confirm?
Move to confirm, yes. A motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Miller. To confirm the appointments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And we have one item left.
Yes, we do. Item A8, which was pulled for discussion from consent by Commissioner Chris.
Madam Chair, if I may address-
Yes, please.
It's not that I have issue with this issue. I pulled it because I'd like to make a, what I think is a constructive improvement to what we're asking the public to review. After meeting with Mary Helen Ferris, Mary Helen, could you come on?
I don't get it.
I pulled A8 because I would like to make a motion to direct the county attorney to revise the language in Section A of the ordinance titled Financial Impact Statement Requirement to add language that the county budget director shall receive input and advice from a committee to be established by board resolution. In the legislative process, it was very common every year to have an estimating conference. We did not rely on one person. We did not rely on one person because it put a lot of responsibility on that person and a lot of potential controversy on that one person. Instead, we had a committee that was made up of different temperaments, talents, and convictions that did the review, and it was always viewed as being objective that way. And what I'm saying is that instead of having one person who could have an agenda make the decision, that we will have a committee established by a resolution of this board, which allows it to be flexible, where we can change it on a regular basis if we so choose, and it would take a lot of the heat off that one person. Mary Helen, I would like your thoughts on this.
That would be modeled also after the state that requires a financial impact statement. They actually have in the statute a whole commission that's, that's with powers to do the financial impact statement. So it would help, and it also might want to change if it's a, depending on the subject matter, you might want different people, but the, you know, the auditor was mentioned and somebody from budget as well as the budget director, so I think that's, I think that's a helpful idea.
Yes, Commissioner White, are you talking? Commissioner, okay, you're recognized.
So is this a substantive change to where we have to defer this to the next meeting with the changes, or you, you feel comfortable that this is a change that-
Correct.
We can make today?
This is to set the public hearing, and so I'll do the notice-
You'll have it, you'll have it come back amended for the, for the public hearing? Okay, and if Commissioners have any issues at that time, we can address it-
Absolutely.
On June 20th. Okay. Did you make a motion?
I did.
Commissioner Chris, did we get a second?
No. Actually, he did not make a motion, so he needed to make a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we amend the language to read as follows. That we ask the county attorney to revise the language in Section A of the ordinance entitled Financial Impact Statement Requirement to add language that the county budget director shall receive input and advice from a committee to be established by the B.O.C.C. Board Resolution.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Chris, seconded by Commissioner White. I'm going to support this, but I'm very concerned about the formation of another committee, and not really sure who's going to be on the committee, and we have a lot of committees already. So if there's something, maybe Bonnie, when she comes back to us, she can tell us, give us an idea of who she would, maybe the-
Absolutely.
Citizen Advisory Board or something. But I'm going to support it today, so we can move forward. We have a motion by Commissioner Chris, seconded by Commissioner White to approve item A8. Seeing no further discussion, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
And that just leaves future issues?
Did we do item G1?
It was deferred or deleted, or no, deferred.
Sorry, I missed that. Okay. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Future items. I was watching Channel 8, Eight on Your Side, yesterday, and there was an issue dealing with a contractor utilizing deceptive advertisement for roofing by having letters sent to certain individuals, most of them either being elderly or immigrants that are, I guess legally immigrants, with our seal on it, saying that your roof needs repair, and if your roof's not repaired, there will be, I guess, liens brought to the particular persons. Come to find out, again, that was deceptive advertisement. They did this to one person, that person not needing a roof, afraid that a lien would be put on her place, was an Haitian immigrant, and went out and had a expensive roof put on- and went out and had a expensive roof put on and done by the person who sent the deceptive advertisement. Our county staff talked about the possibility of what they may do. The only thing that they talked about was not allowing that person to do that again. The person said, okay, I will withdraw, will not do that again, but there's no teeth into what this person said they would do. They did this over in Pasco County, and one of our former state representatives and senators, the tax collector, Mike Vasano, ran him out of Pasco County. But the fact of the matter is, is that there were nothing, there was nothing done to this person doing that. So I'm going to ask staff, Mr. Miller and Ms. Beck, to go back and, and work on something to bring back to us in the next meeting as to what type of criminal charges we can bring on a person that does deceptive advertising, specifically using Hillsborough County's logo and passing this information on to the elderly or whomever and saying that the county is the ones that asking you to do these certain things, and the mere fact is that we're not. There, that's deceptive advertisement. Basically, I think it's against the law, as far as I'm concerned. But from what I'm hearing, there's nothing out there that's bringing any charges against someone doing that. They can basically leave this county, go to Pinellas County, do the same thing, come back to this county, and we need to look at either, I would like to see it as a felony, but something that you can bring back in our next meeting saying what we can do for a person doing this.
Okay, next is Commissioner Crist.
I wanted to respond to that. I agree with Commissioner Miller. Over thirty years ago, when I was on the board of the American Advertising Federation, I helped lead the way to establish the Commission on Advertising Ethics and served on that board for a while, and this was one of the issues that we were very seriously engaged in addressing, and that was deceptive advertising. There are two potential sides to this. You have the, if intent can be improved, can be proved to defraud, then you've got fraud, and this could be turned over to the state attorney for prosecution. There's the civil side where you have the infringement on a copywritten piece of art and trademark, and they could be sued and should be. And, you know, we should have a disclaimer on our website where it's public that any infringement on our, any of our copyrights would be prosecuted to the extent of the law, period, so that people are on notice for this time forward. But there are two potential courses of action, Commissioner Miller.
I'm going to bring that back.
Okay, Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. I just want to thank you for bringing that forward. I did not see the report, but I did spend a summer of my time in law school at Gulf Coast Legal Services, where we took many civil cases, this was twenty years ago, in Pinellas County, where contractors would prey on mostly older minority women that had their homes, but their homes were in very bad repair, and they'd have them sign over their homes, and then the repairs done were very substandard. They were, come to us losing their homes, and we were often able to get the contracts overturned. But to, it's unconscionable, and I'd, I'd love to see a felony for that, too.
Okay. Commissioner Miller, when you said something, it made me think, and I forgot to put it on my list of things to do. But if it's okay, I'd like to send a letter to the Pinellas County Commission expressing our condolences on the passing of John Maroney, if that's okay with everybody. That was pretty sad. The guy went through just a teen million battles with leukemia, so it's pretty sad. Commissioner Crist?
One, one last thing. I should have brought this up at the beginning of the meeting, but I was focused on the agenda, but I think it's something that we should take a couple of minutes to observe. One of our colleagues in the Tampa Bay area and a former colleague of Miller, Merman, and I, who we served in the legislature with, passed away two weeks ago, and that was County Commissioner John Maroney. John served eight years in the Florida House, left with high honors and respect. John was considered a swing vote there where he was open and honest and deliberative in all of his decision-making. There were significant pieces of legislation and reforms that went through during his tenure thanks to his stewardship and his open-mindedness. He was a good friend, serving on the Pinellas County Commission and serving more times as chair than anybody else, I think, in history. John was a bridge builder, and John was a peacemaker, and John was a policymaker, and John was a reformer. John was a very good man and a very great leader. He leaves a huge void in public service in our state and in our community and will be very deeply missed, and I would like to just take a couple of moments here in quiet observance of John's passing.
Okay, we'll have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? We done enough damage today? Okay, thanks, y'all. We're adjourned.